Fall Start. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this is the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Maroon?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Happy birthday Barbara, here.
Thank you. Testa? Zandry? And Chairman Savoni?
Here, Councilors Testa and Zandry did advise me that they had other obligations this evening and yes, I'd like to thank our town clerk Barbara Thompson for working this evening on her birthday. Happy birthday Barbara. All right, on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, item H has been withdrawn, so I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items A through G and I.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item five, which is the public question and answer period. It appears that the rain has thinned out the room. And if there are no questions for the public question and answer period, we will close the public question and answer period. Move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding the United Public Service Employees Union, Wallingford Educational Secretaries Local 424, Unit 31. This contract from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021. We have representatives on the Board of Ed, if you could please identify yourselves when you get comfortable. Michael out of Board of Ed.
Danielle Valisi, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel.
Sal Menzo, Superintendent.
Good evening, thank you for coming, if you could just give us a summary of the changes, that would be great.
Absolutely, so this contract is the clerical contract, there are 63 employees currently in it. Like you said earlier, it is a three-year contract, so it'll go from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021. In the first year, the wages for year 18 to 19, the gross wage increase will be 1.75% for those at the maximum step. Those not at the max step will have step movement in the first year. For year 1920, the gross wage increase will be 2% for those at the max step. And just to note here, we did make some changes to the chart, so there is still a six-step wage chart that we are maintaining, but they eliminated step one, so that step two became the new step one. And therefore, at the end, splitting step five into two steps. So now step five now becomes step five and substicks moving forward. So those staff members that get step movement will have a step movement, but no GWI for that year. For the final year, the 2021 year, the gross wage increase will be at 1.25% at the max step and a step movement for those not at the max step, but no GWI. Moving on to the insurance waivers, currently we have 11 staff members who participate in the waivers, the insurance waivers, so for the 1819 school year, for a family, they would receive $3,500, for a two-person, it's $2,500, individual maybe $1,000. When we move into year 1920, $3,000 for the family, $2,000 for a two-person, and the individual stays the same at $1,000. When we move into the last year of 2021, it's $2,000 for the family, $1,500 for two-person, and the individual stays the same at a $1,000. And the thing to note here is that no new employees, new or current, may participate in the waiver if they're not currently already participating in it, so we can't add anybody new to it. Moving on to the insurance cost reduction, the plan changes here would be to increase the copays for office visits, urgent care, ER visits, outpatient services, and inpatient hospitalization. The premium cost share increased to 15%, it was at 14, so it went to 15. And effective July 1 of 2019, the HDHP becomes the core plan moving forward. The last section here, we just wanted to highlight, was we did some language clarification moving through and some kind of housekeeping items, so just a couple of things we wanted to reflect accurately in the contract as it is. So on page six, we took a look at the language that related to the work year. We did make some changes during this contract for some of the clerical employees who were working 11 months, back to 10 months and so forth, so we wanted to reflect their working months appropriately and correctly in the contract. We also made a change to a little bit of the language where staff members, if they were requesting an unpaid day off, in the past, they could get it approved to their immediate supervisor, the change has now been that it will go through the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel's office instead. And the last piece we wanted to address was in light of the Janus decision and some of the language, while we didn't change anything in the contract, we just kind of wanted to highlight some things that in Article 23, Section 2, we do have some language there that talks about that in the event any federal or state legislation, governmental regulations or court decisions cause invalidation of this article or section of the agreement, all articles or sections are not so invalidated and should remain in full force and effect. And the thinking behind this was that the understanding that all the parties, the language remained the way it is for now and to be cleaned up at a later point, we didn't want to hold up the agreement of this contract based on that, so we decided that for now, this will protect our employees and moving forward so that we are, you know, still honoring what the language says from the Janus decision.
Thank you, questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening all. I'd like to start where we ended off. Article 2, Section 2 on page 3 is not in compliance with the Janus decision. So what does the Board of Education intend to do to inform the employees that your revision in Article 23, Section 2, which is very general, does apply to Article 2, Section 2? Right now, you're leaving it up to the employees to try and figure it out themselves?
Um, yes, we are, but we're not, I think that that's a generalization, but the fact is that, again, we do have, we have shared with all the unions that we are going to abide by the Janus decision, we've had thoughtful conversations with all of them, we have not had any difficulty with any unions saying that they're contrary to that, they're not trying to be subversive or go around any of the legal language, they have communicated to their staff. And we have had, not this union, but we've had other unions who have had members come to us and their rights were honored under the Janus decision, so I respectfully understand what you're saying, we will again work with union leadership, they have been very collaborative in this, our unions have been, our union leadership, we're very, very fortunate, we have people who really are about doing the work, and the contract is just one of those things that you have to do because it's codifying a relationship, but they're about doing their work on a daily basis. But I do respectfully take your inquiry and I could talk to the unions, we meet with them on a regular basis, and we could express your concern and we can express our continued concern about making sure that it's being communicated appropriately.
Well, my concern is that we're being asked to approve a contract that's not in compliance with the law, and I'll, well, I'll tell you that I ended up suing the state police on a very similar thing, and the Labor Board ordered that the proper language is going to be disseminated.
Okay.
So, you know.
No, I understand, and we-
I'm very concerned about this because, you know, you say you're letting the union know, but who's letting the employees know?
Again.
That's the point, so, you know, I get at least one call every week from somebody who works for a town, and usually it's this town, and they say, "Well, I'm looking at the language in the contract, and this is what it says, but how does it jive with this case that I heard about?" And it's very frustrating because we keep on getting these contracts that's not in compliance, and I just, it's not that difficult to put a cover sheet on it or something like that, so I would just like to see proper language, this is clearly not.
We'll take that under consideration, thank you.
I've brought it up for 10 years up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract, United Public Service Employees Union, Wallingford Educational Secretaries Local 424, Unit 31, as presented.
There's no second, the motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Golak?
John Golak, 27, Mary Lane, I am a member of UPSU, the management union, and just to talk about Counselor Fishbein's point, inquiring about opting out of the union, there's a concern with some of this stuff. Lost my point, hold on. Fucking with their own human resource, Jim Hutt, the employees treated as non-bargaining when they decide to opt out, so we're left with really no definition of what does that mean and how does that relate with transfers or job promotions or anything else to that matter, other than you can't participate in union meetings and so forth.
Any other, ma'am, if you want to come up to the microphone, please identify yourself for the record, thank you.
My name is Flo Mulcahy, and I'm president of the Clerical Workers Union, in agreement with Dr. Menzo, he has met with us, there is not one member in our union who has asked to leave. As a matter of fact, I received an email today saying that they don't want that because we would have no protection at all. Nobody has questioned that in our contract. If this is another up-sue group, that's fine, but it doesn't apply, I mean, it hasn't been an issue for the clerical workers.
Anything else from the public? There being nothing, I bring it back to the council. If there are no questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Counselor Chortel?
It's an off night for you, isn't it? I just wanted to make a point that this motion has no consequences in terms of the outcome of the contract, if you're watching at home or in the room, if this motion passes, the contract passes, if this motion were to fail, the contract still passes. The only thing that will stop this contract is a motion to reject it, just want to be clear on that in case, I know people, you know, at home sometimes don't follow that, so just, if a counselor is really, really adamant this contract shouldn't pass, then he or she should reject the contract and make that motion, that would be the appropriate motion, and that would be the vote with consequences, just a comment.
With that, Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Onto item seven, which is the report from the Community Pool Committee, we could have the Community Pool Committee come forward. The lens cover is closed on the projector. Why don't you guys start identifying yourselves, and we already know Mr. Golak, but-
I'm Mike Sevenelli, Vice Chair of Park and Rec Commission and Chairman of the Pool Committee.
David Stein, I'm with Silver Petroselin Associates Architects and Engineers.
John Golak, Director of Park and Rec.
Thank you, gentlemen, what do you have for us?
So, good evening, we're here to finally unveil about eight months' worth of work, going back to January 28th when we kicked it off. The presentation that's behind you, if you recall, back in October, I came to you with this committee, and Dave Gilo, who's our Rec Commission Chairperson and our Vice Chairman of our Pool Committee, and presented to you where we needed to go. So, what I did was I just kind of added to this presentation, and we're going to pick it up at page 20, just so that we could have a historical document. So, we began January 3rd and had over 22 meetings culminating with September 19th. The commission was tasked with considering three options, repair, rebuild, and reuse of the property. To summarize, this committee met with a variety of professionals in various lines of work, member of the original pool committee in 1991, the mayor, Department of Public Health, Mertha Pools, TLB Architecture, Creative Recreation, which is a playground splashpad company, Steve Lazarus, the town's purchasing agent, field visit to Trumbull, Connecticut, the town's risk manager, town's health sanitarian, town's controller, town's public works department, Counselor Gina Morgenstein, Alita Sella of the Save the Pool Group, and a collection of residents who did attend meetings throughout the year. On May 9th, we took a field trip to Trumbull, Connecticut, they have three pools. What was of interest to us was their outdoor pool that had a splashpad playground component with it, some of that information's right there, they do run their pool season from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and they do provide nights swimming until 10 o'clock, three nights per week. The main question facing the committee was to spend money to fix an aging facility or reduce the overall footprint, including a splashpad and park that can be utilized on the shoulder seasons of the pool. After many hours of discussion and investigation, the committee focused efforts on a new facility. The committee determined the new facility was the direction to pursue mainly due to the aging facility, the equipment, and the cost to rehab that would need many compliance repairs. The committee developed a proposed plan for the concept of a community pool park, a family destination. The project looks to promote a positive visual image of Wallingford, enhance the quality of life, nurture and promote a healthy community with the addition of this project. The project, and I'm going to go pretty quick on this one, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Stein, the project consists of a main pool, 12,900 square feet with shade structures, separate lap pool, which will be same as the current lap pool, 3850 square feet, and a splashpad of about 4,700 square feet, new playground equipment for 2- to 5-year-olds, 6- to 12-year-olds, a fitness playground, sand volleyball court, a Class 3 food service concession stand that can operate potentially for six to seven months, refurbished bathhouse, picnic areas, and a seasonal pavilion for daytime entertainment while the pool's open. The current pool stands at 42,850 square feet and approximately a million gallons of water. The plan is to reduce it to 21,510 square feet and approximately 334,000 gallons of water. It'll allow by code a bathing capacity of about 160 people, however, there will be challenges as we have worked on through our committee with parking and shower facilities, so capacity may have to be limited to a number that will provide for parking and the appropriate shower facilities. Operationally, there may be reductions in water and chemical expense due to the smaller size, public work staff and painting annually will go away with keeping the same schedule of the mid-June to mid-August schedule, which is about nine and a half weeks. The committee is proposing a pool tag feature structure to cover the operating costs, Parks and Rec Management software has the ability of past management, so we're exploring pool tag options, including but not limited to day passes online. So without further ado, I will turn over presentation to Dave Stein.
Thank you, John, good evening, everybody, again, my name is David Stein, I'm a principal with Silver Petroselin Associates, our team was brought on in mid-June to evaluate the, let me see whether I could get this a little bit more within view for you. As John gets that set up, so essentially, our goal was to come into, come into the facility and evaluate the existing conditions, that not only included the bathhouse and the pool pump structure, but also the site conditions and so forth. We were able to, as we got in there, we immediately discovered that there were deficiencies just with the aging equipment, there was corrosion on some of the piping, and this equipment is well beyond its useful life. Looking at the pool or the boat house, the actual pool structure itself, we saw delamination of copinges, sidewalks, paving areas and so forth, that needs significant repair, handrailings, paintings, so forth. The bathhouse structure itself is really underutilized, it's designed and its overall square footage is really being underutilized today, as it was designed at a time when lockers were being used, a lot of changing facilities and so forth, so your overall square footage is just limited, the aging of the plumbing fixtures, its orientation, and so forth. With that, we actually saw some great opportunities, the site itself, as our goal is to, and just as you see in this aerial, there is plenty of opportunity to expand and rework the overall site. These images that you see in front of you show you some of the open fields that are located in the rear of the property and to the side of the property, and from there, based on our goal of creating a destination that can be used not purely just for pool use, right now, your pool use is zero entry, you come in, you swim, there's very limited opportunities for the public, mainly it's focused, and John, I think, has some statistics that he shared earlier that shows that the majority of the people that are using this are of younger age, and our goal is to spread that across, to be able to have an opportunity for everybody to use the space. So, our immediately, we were surprised to see just the opportunities that your property allowed us to do. Our goal was to try to create a destination that would include a six-lap lane pool, reduce the overall main pool that would allow for zero entry along the majority of the perimeter of the main pool, shallow and deep water area, which we could integrate a covered slide in that deep end, so the pool is not just going in and swimming, there's some other opportunities there. Probably the biggest improvement and change from what you currently have is the proposal of a splashpad or spray pad, and many communities are using this, this will also allow the facility to be used in the shoulder seasons such as in early, in early May, and extending all the way probably just to September, as we had some warmer weathers just in the last couple days, that's about 5,000 square feet, and that would also be separated from the pool, so the pool can be closed, I'll show you how that's integrated. All of this, what we're doing is we're trying to isolate the filter and separating the filter and the pumping systems, right now, all of that is connected, so if we're able to keep separate systems, the operating costs are going to be reduced just based on that. We are proposing to bring in a playground equipment that could be used for very different ages, from the lower ages, John mentioned, all the way up actually to a fitness area which can be used by seniors or really anybody interested in using some of this equipment, I'll show you pictures of that. I mentioned the bathhouse, we actually did look at some schemes of fully demolishing that, but we immediately discovered that the structure is in good shape, the infrastructure is there, we could basically renovate as opposed to, and repurpose as needed. So some of the things that are failing right now is your lifeguard station is really just a pop-up tent, we've been able to integrate a small office in there with better viewing, if you're familiar with the site, that structure is actually located a few feet or grade level above the pool area, so we wanted to make sure we had good sightlines throughout the pool area for safety reasons. We are creating and renovating indoor and outdoor showers, I want to note that the health code requires that you do have that, that includes hot water, so we need to create an outdoor shower area and obviously renovate the existing shower rooms that are there. You will need to have private changing rooms, basically, this is just one big open area that you have right now. The integration of a sand and volleyball court, an entertainment area or a seasoned covered stage, we're envisioning something that can be just a fabric structure that can be taken down seasonally, not a permanent structure per se. Parking, we, currently, there's 98 parking spaces, we believe we could expand to about 118 or so, and then a brand-new pump house, which would be more centrally located to the area. This is sort of a small area, but important in terms of dealing with the health code, and I'll talk a bit more about trash and recycling locations and some of the implications that the health code has within that. I'll quickly go through these schemes A and scheme B and C, the committee, these are some of our earlier work, but it led to our final scheme D that was essentially presented, our goal was to look, as you begin to see, the lap pool, the main pool, a splashpad, different orientations, and organization, but I'll just fast-forward, and I'd be happy to go back if there's any other questions. Where the committee landed on our four scheme that has been sort of tweaked and revised over the last month or so, and essentially, what you see in front of you is we are fully demolishing the existing pool, as you saw, that's just about a million gallons of water, our goal was to reduce the overall square footage to just under 13,000 square feet of a main pool. And you see that there's zero entry at the perimeter of that, what you see, that sort of red squiggly line, that's intended to be the slide, and that goes into a deeper end, so we go from zero feet, you begin to see a 3- and that goes into a deeper end. So we go from zero feet, you begin to see a three and then a five. It's a relatively shallow pool. That is separated, physically separated, and code requires us to separate our main pool from our lap pool by a certain distance. And that, you see the lane pool, that'll be relatively shallow pool. So we will not have a diving board or any type of deep swimming. We want to keep that relatively shallow for safety reasons and also just to reduce the overall volume of filtration. But let me back up. As we enter in from the main intersection, the signalized intersection, we're going to keep parking relatively in the same spot. We're proposing to repave and to restripe and to look at some site lighting and improvements around there, but that circular piece virtually remains intact. But what you see along the road is the addition of added parking. We're envisioning that we could use eco pavers, so we wouldn't fully pave that. We will need, you will need to engineer this in a way so we don't increase the impervious or paved surface. So we want to be, we're cognizant of stormwater management, especially on a day like today. So this would work extremely well for that. It allows for a right turn only exit out. So this is really overflow parking as needed. The main entry will be actually through the pool house, and I'll show you functionally how that works. You begin to see, so back to the main pool and to the lap pool. You see off to the right is the splash pad at just under 5,000 square feet. Adjacent to that, to the left, is the newly constructed or a brand-new pump house, which now, as you could see, the, just to be able to get all of that plumbing, we are now working sort of equal in between that and reducing the run. Currently, the pump house is located, or the filter house is located just up against the road. So there's a lot of piping that's running back and forth, and we want to reduce the overall square footage of that. Well, you see, to the right of the splash pad is that playground area. That'll be similar to some of the playgrounds that you do have throughout the community, and those will be designed in a fashion that will be age-appropriate. It will have certain fall zones and meet the overall code that is required. To the right, we actually have what's called the fitness area and sort of that bluish gray area. We're looking at potentially two locations. You may have noticed in the, one of the photos that I showed to you earlier, there is actually a bridge that, that goes over that area. We thought that would be a great opportunity to use that. But we're really looking at either that area or just adjacent to the, to the playground as a fitness equipment. And I'll show you some pictures earlier that illustrate what we have in mind. The volleyball court that's located there, and then all the way to the right, that seasonal pavilion that could really work well. And again, that's intended for daytime use. Camps could use that to gather. They could put on other performances, and it just kind of works well. All the way to the left, you see where it's picnic area, just outside the pool area. The design is subtle and it's hard to show you the overall piece of it, but what essentially we're doing is we're separating, we're now bringing food that's not allowed to be within the pool area, creating locations where you can picnic around and still bring food on your own. There will also be a concession area. When I get to the next slide, it's going to, going to illustrate that. And with that, it's probably a good opportunity to go to the overall floor plan. So as I mentioned, we're keeping the bearing walls intact. We're keeping the roof intact. And really, all our work is internal. We will, we will be most likely reskinning the roof and looking at the windows and so forth, but that's minor renovation. We're not doing major additions and structural rework to the building. We're creating a center core where we're, where we're bringing in brand-new plumbing fixtures. Those are required by code, and it really depends on the overall occupancy. As John mentioned, when we run the numbers for overall occupancy, we have larger than we would need. So we will manage and basically limit the occupancy and design our plumbing fixtures accordingly. To the right, there are outdoor showers. There are indoor showers. To the bottom-left of the plan, we have the first aid area, and we also have an operations office that's located there. That currently does not exist. And that's going to be a huge enhancement for the facility to be able to sort of manage things internally, be able to keep equipment, and actually, they have much better views throughout the entire facility. To the top-left is the commercial kitchen, which will allow for a concessioneer to operate. That would be code compliant to meet all the health code. And that is located at the top-left, which is sort of outside of the pool area proper, which we designed an area for plenty of parking, plenty of picnicking adjacent to the parking and separate from the pool area. So in, overall, just to sort of conclude, I, yeah, also, John, as you pointed out, there's also restrooms that are located just to the top-right. Those can be used after hours or when the pool is closed and the splash pad is open and the playground is open. So I think just in general and an overview of this concept is the idea was to maximize the opportunity that currently exists on that property and expand the use not just to the pool. The water feature is the splash pad. We have the playground feature and so forth. So with my last slide, as I conclude, these are just some of the inspirational pictures that other communities, regionally and across the country have done that inspires us. That a splash pad, as you could see, really was just some very simple things and a concrete surface that's properly prepared can be used by all ages. Next slide. This shows some areas where we could create fitness areas that can be used with very simple type of equipment, not very expensive, but again, can be used by all. And here are just some smaller pieces of equipment. This is what we envisioned to use that is handicap accessible. It could be used by people of all ages, very simple weight-bearing type of exercises to promote health. And this really parlay's well with the use of a pool facility, a park, an area of overall destination. And with that, I'll turn it back to John.
Do you want to go through that last slide? Do you want to talk to?
Cost? Sure. So lastly, as our charge as an architect is to come up with these ideas, but also to, to look at what the opinion of probable construction costs will be. As you see, these are early concept designs, so there's still a lot of work to be engineered, done. But we're able to begin to look at cost and give you a order of magnitude of where we think we are. The majority of your work was in site improvements. Reworking the paving area, regrading, expanding the parking. We have demolition of the existing pool, all its infrastructure. There'll be new landscaping, paving, fencing, so forth. We're, we're projecting, that's about $2.1 million of work there. The pool and the pool equipment and the splash pad, that package alone is about $1.7 million of the overall work. The pool house, that's about a 22,000 square foot building. We're looking to do renovations, mainly interior, about $400,000. The playscape, the canopies and those miscellaneous site structures that you have is about $700,000. There are always soft costs, things that are beyond the bricks and mortar of a project that would need to be factored in, which is typically about 15 to 20% above those construction costs, which brings you a range of construction about $4.5 to $6 million. And those could be better defined when your future design team comes in and does their engineering and really could begin to create itemized estimates. But this gives you an overall sense of where we think the, the numbers will, will come within.
So that concludes that part of the presentation and open for questions or thoughts, comments?
Thank you for that. For questions, we will start with Counselor Shortell.
Sign me up. That's awesome. I love the design. And I just had a couple of questions to follow up. Regarding the capacity of the new pool, the slide said 860, you said 160, is it, which one?
Eight sixty.
It is eight sixty.
It said 860.
Okay, okay. Okay. I just wanted to clarify. That's a pretty small pool. It was just 160. So... It is just a comment, really. You, you do Park and Rec. You do a great job with your minutes. We get the minutes as counselors, so I'm not going to sit here and tell you, oh, I have to digest this and think about, I don't have to think about it because we've been following this whole process for the last several years now, especially the last eight months. It's, you've taken very detailed minutes. You've come before us several times. So this is, everything that was presented here is pretty, pretty consistent with what I've been reading in those minutes. There are no surprises here, from the cost to the amenities. It's all been laid out. So, so for, for my part, I don't have to digest anything. I don't have to think about it. I've been thinking about this for, for a long time. So that's just speaking, speaking for, from my own perspective. I guess my only comments, other comment would be, you know, slide 26 really broke down some of the specific components as far as costs. I, I don't want to, if we ever actually go forward with this, I would not want to nickel and dime it. I feel like if we're going to do it, let's do it. Let's put the lighting in, you know, let's have night swimming. Let's keep it open through, you know, Labor Day at least. Let's, let's go all in. Let's not, let's not, let's get it down to 4 million, and we won't do this, we won't do this, we won't do that. I, that's just my own thought. And just getting way ahead of ourselves, just because I'm, I'm not sure of the process here. And we kind of had an education in this last budget season as far as the council requesting money or the, who can do what. Chairman, I don't know, how does this go to RFP? Like, is that something we can ask for, or does the mayor have to ask us? How does that work?
Mayor, I think you're in a very good position to answer that question.
Well, we would, we would have to put out for hiring an RFP to hire an architect, and then the details are drawn up with bid specifications ultimately the goal, and then bid specifications are advertised. And once we have a bid price, then it would be a funding ordinance. But certainly, we'd have to appropriate funds for an architect after we would go through a selection process for an architect. Typically, it's a two, two, two envelope process.
And that, that request has to come from you. I mean, we can't...
Administratively.
Administratively, right. Understood. Thank you. And again, I know it's a lot of money. I'm not trying to downplay the amount of money here. I'm not trying to downplay, we have a lot of needs in town, but you know, we've had a community pool for, you know, 50 years, 60 years, back to Council Letourneau's first term on the council, I think it was put in. So we've had it, we've had it for a long time. This is something that, you know, it's already there, and we've, we've been sinking money into it. And, and there's, you know, I know there's a lot of talk about the usage of the pool. And the usage is, I think it actually spiked this year a little bit over what it, what it has been. It, it, you know, and then, you know, why did, why did the usage drop? The usage dropped because we enforced the rule about being in town after the boy nearly drowned in 2012. That's why the usage dropped. It's not that, you know, people are building more pools in their backyards. If you go to the pool, and I've been there every week for the last five years, and it's been open with my kids, you all do a great job keeping it open. You do a great job of running it. But it's amazing to me that people even, you get that many people even going to it, the condition it's in right now. I mean, that bathhouse especially. So I think that, that there's definitely a need for it, and it's something we've always had in town. So I, I'll go out on a limb and say I'm for it. That may not be popular, but that's just how I feel. So I appreciate all the work you've done, and thank you.
Counselor laughing.
Thank you. It, it looks great. I want to echo a lot of what Counselor Shortell had said. And thank you again for all the hard work. And, and I'd seen earlier design ideas or proposals, and, and this looks great as well. It's nice to see it kind of fine-tuned. I like the, the pool with the, the structure kind of in between the parking lot. The pool kind of sets it back a little bit. The, the thought put into the picnic areas and, and the separations between the playgrounds and stuff, it, it's, it's clear, and as Counselor Shortell said, anybody that was attending your meetings or reading your minutes would see that this was, this was not just a, well, we think the pool's like not doing well right now, so maybe we're going to close it. Like, this has been a long, ongoing process, and a lot of people have been spending a lot of time on this. And I know from sitting up here and from talking to you that it wasn't easy either. Sometimes being berated from either members of the public or on Facebook, people, they weren't sure what was going on and jumped to conclusions. So it was a good payoff to, to the end of the journey. Unlike Counselor Shortell, I'm going to digest the cost a little bit. It, it, it's a lot. I do agree that if, if we're going to do it, we should do it. And I, and I don't know if they can be done in phases, a pool first and splash pad, playground, so on and so forth. And, and maybe you guys have answers to that. The 160 versus 860 was, was covered. Can we talk about to, the last time you were here, and then we had a subsequent meeting in the mayor's office, we talked about a survey, online survey. We were going to go out to the public, and it was determined then that we wanted a little more finite direction, information to, so we knew what we were actually getting feedback on. Is, is it still a plan to do some sort of survey, or are we kind of like, this is it? Let's roll forward. There's been opportunities to come to meetings and submit feedback that way. What's the, the plan?
So there would be time. I think that we were coming here with a concept.
Yeah.
At the point that we had come back to you in May, and we had said that we were going to do a survey, and having the discussions whether the survey was going to be digital, whether it was going to be paper, how that was going to happen. Frankly, I don't have the staff that can do all the analytics of 5,000, 10,000, whatever number survey that we were going to get at that point. So for us as a committee, we had decided that let's get a concept. Let's throw something on the paper so that we can get something visual. We've been to three or four different municipalities. We've looked at other pools. We're in that business. We've had other professionals come in, talk about the pros and cons. So we just thought, for time's sake, we wanted to fast-track this. We didn't want to get mired into four years of one committee, this committee disbanding or giving it up and going another eight years like the last pool. We wanted to get to this point today. So that now, sure, we, we could put this up in our lobby. We could send it out through the 14,000 people we have in our database. We could consult and talk about maybe sending some mailer out that has this picture, and then some of the, the site amenities and the costs and put that out. We have a new webpage that people can be directed to from the town webpage. It could be posted on there. So there's other ways of seeing it. We're open to phone calls. We meet every month at Park and Rec for our Rec Commission meeting. So there's avenues to still talk about different things, different aspects of the pool that maybe we missed.
And I think it's important that everybody understand too that everything continues to evolve from the, the new Park and Rec website, registering and things like that, to how pool tags or day passes, as you mentioned, may happen. So I don't need everybody exploding on Facebook that they didn't. We, we didn't determine, we didn't have an answer whether we're getting day passes right away. Like, we just, it's one step at a time. Okay, and then, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to piggyback on that. We've gotten a lot of input from public, not a formal survey, in many different ways. People have come to our meetings. We've read the forum. We've talked to other communities. And what the people that we have talked to about this are just elated over what we've, we've come up with. So, you know, the question of putting a survey is just now going out and getting a bunch of opinions on things that might not be as significant. I think this is a good base concept, and I think the people will, will like what they see, as you folks have indicated, so far, at least two of you.
Yeah, no, yeah, no. And I think it looks great. And, and I, I think even if, even if you're not doing a survey, and I don't know if it was clear whether you are or you're not, but even if you don't, of course, anybody can submit feedback or correspond with anybody on the...
This is the concept. It's the starting point.
Right. So it's, you know, I don't want people to feel like they're shut out of the process at all. And there's been plenty of opportunity to, to contact members of the Park and Rec Commission or the actual officials that work in the Park and Rec office.
And they can come to our pool committee meetings.
Exactly.
They're posted, and we give, you know, there's a lot of amount of time for them to come, so.
The, the other question I had was maybe either on the map or if it was up on the screen again, could you highlight in, in the conceptual form or what maybe you've discussed so far, where the, the different points of, of closing or segregation would be based on the seasons? You know, first the pool, then the splash pad, and is there a gate between the splash pad and the playground? I couldn't, I didn't notice.
Yeah, it's hard, it, it's hard to tell, but here's, here's the design intent here. So just, just below the splash pad, you start seeing sort of a, a squiggly line. That's intended to be the fence area that, that encloses the splash pad, the playground, and also the fitness area. And that will also border right up against the border of the, of the water course, that, that stream that runs sort of all the way through the property. So that will be segregated. So in the time, for example, in September, when the... So in the time, for example, in September, when the main pool is closed, the splash pad, the playground and the fitness area will all be cordoned off. It's important, we want to make sure that especially the most, mainly the younger kids that are gonna be using that are, are segregated to this area. Um, and there will then be a gate that allows you to enter and exit. What I didn't mention is there's a small area just between that. There's actually a, we'll need to create some type of handicap ramp just because of the, the grading that's there. And that's where the lifeguard or first aid station is gonna be located, which now gives them a perch to be able to one manage, manage the people coming from or coming from either location, but also gives them some good points of view to see the entire area and have better viewpoint.
And the access points where somebody would enter the pool today, which is kind of still there on the diagram it looks like. And then further away, are those kind of your emergency exits?
Those are only emergencies. So the main entry, we want them to come in actually through the, uh, through the pool house itself, through the bathhouse itself. And then from there, they will be managed in some fashion with their tags and so forth. We actually want to eliminate, it does show an egress pathway that you come through the side. We want to eliminate that and focus it directly. Now the architecture is gonna tell you this is where you enter and that will all be, uh, maintained. There is a, a, a fence line that's gonna be a taller fence line that delineates basically from those pools uh, shade structures to the parking lot. So that defines that. And then there'll be some lower fencing that just divides the pool from the picnic area. Any exit points are purely just means of egress that's required by the fire code. Uh, the intent is not to have multiple entries and exit. We want everybody to filter in through and exit at one point.
Okay. I'm, I'm good right now. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't know if I have Counselor Shortell's euphoria about the project, but it is a fantastic design. Uh, and it's really, um, it's really interesting. Uh, I guess my questions are, so it's obviously a lot less water than we had before, right? And so.
Yeah, it's almost two thirds less.
Right. So would that translate into two thirds of the maintenance costs? Cause it seems like there's a lot more going on here. So do you have any kind of projection as to what it would cost to maintain the pool? The future pool compared to what we're looking at today?
So if you look at this slide, the current pool expenses, based on the current schedule of the nine and a half weeks or so, the staffing is 67,000. There's public work staff costs, open and close the pool, paint the pool. The materials for painting, the custodial bid, the pump house operation bid, water, electric and chemicals currently cost 79,000 for a total of 146. So we haven't figured out exactly what the 300,000 gallons is, but it's certainly gonna be decreased. And then the efficiencies of new mechanicals, Dave?
Yeah, just the equipment alone, its pumps and so forth, we're gonna be able to reduce the efficiencies significantly. There could be easily a 20 or 30% reduction in just overall, um, just expenditure of energy just based on going in with new equipment. Uh, the chemicals, uh, we're contemplating going to a saltwater uh, type of pool. It still has a chlorination component to it, but that reduces some of your costs. Uh, because you're not, and just even the operating cost of consistently adding chemicals to the pool. So that reduces the overall cost. Um, just the renovation of the, uh, bathhouse alone. Uh, new fixtures will be able to use, um, less water. So, so there's a reduction in piece. So overall, it's just pieces and parts that help reduce your overall operating costs.
Okay. Again, it's a great design. So thank you very much.
Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, gentlemen. As Counselor Shortell said, you know, you've kept us very well informed on this, step by step, and I, and I really appreciate that. Um, Dave, are you part of this committee or are you brought in as a, as a consultant?
I was brought in as a consultant.
Okay. Um, because I, I, you know, I've been involved with a bunch of projects and, you know, and every time you do, you and your, your firm do a fantastic job. I'm always very impressed. I was sitting out there. I was just like, here's another bang up job. So, you know, I know with other department heads, sometimes they come to us and they say, you know, we already have a relationship. They're already immersed, you know, will you, will you waive the procedure? So I don't know if that's the intention here, but certainly I'd, I'd be open to considering that. Um, I just, where do we go next? You know, if, if we're, if the next step is the architect um, or, you know, renderings, um, you know, I, I don't see why we wait, quite frankly. I mean, we have a meeting in two weeks or so. I, I don't see why we can't take the next step. Whether it's, you know, John brought by you, brought by the mayor, let's, let's go. Um, I'm, I'm excited. So I'm excited about at least getting the answers and then making that decision. And there's a lot of other decisions that have to be made, you know? The day pass and all of that stuff is operational. Uh, but I have, uh, you know, a high level of faith in the, the committee and John and Dave and, you know, everybody who's involved in this. I just, there's not many things that people talk about. You know, we, we have a good, good tax base, good mix. What's the attraction? You know, and, and this could be an attraction. We have an opportunity here and, um, I just, I want to see this in some way, shape or form happen. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first off, thank you for, for the work you've put into this. It, it, it really, it's a great project. You did a great job. Taking it forward, let's just say conceptual, what you have so far. We gave you the green light to do it. What's the timeframe for something like this? You know, from start to finish? A good guesstimate?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, you know, typically for experience of, you know, you have to, your, your bid process alone takes some time. I can't necessarily speak to that, but from just probably a few months of just getting an RFP out there and begin to get that piece together. But if you're talking from design, um, this is easily, um, this is easily a six to nine month process of design. Um, this is, this is purely a concept. These are, these are rough sketches that are there. There's a lot of engineering that needs to take place to survey the property. We need to bring this in front of your land use, uh, agencies and, uh, review the impacts of the site and make sure that that is all compliant. Um, so there's a lot of work. Um, there's some traffic studies that need to be done to evaluate the impact. There's some things that we're proposing as a new curb cut. Um, so six to nine months. Uh, in terms of bringing the public back in, the schematic design phase is really the time to do enough of a deep dive to discover some of the things that haven't been discovered here yet. And that's where you, where you want to focus your time to make sure that you really truly lock in this plan in its form and its shape. Uh, I, but overall, it's a six to nine month total process before you go out to bid and begin to get the pricing from a, from a contractor.
Okay. Now, yeah, where I was going with this also is the, you know, would, would the, would we lose a summer of no pool while this is being done? Or would it be, would construction start after the pool is closed? Uh, it kind of shortens the, the period up a little bit, but you know, uh, you would, you could start in the fall, probably lay, lay off during the winter or do some work, maybe in the bathhouse in the wintertime. And then early spring, so it could be, I, I was just, that's where I was going with this. You know, how, how much of the pool season would we lose? Has that been given any thought or?
The start and stop date is always a challenge for us in New England, especially a project like this. It's when could you get in the ground and when could you get out of the ground? And sometimes our season, at least last year was pretty short. Uh, we, we had snow on the ground in April and and so forth. And here's where you see where we are now. So construction's hard to predict. I think you're gonna need to get through your evaluation first and then to be able to see when you're starting and so forth. If there could be any prep work that's done early and that, we did discuss that with the committee as we were thinking that far ahead, uh, whether you could do some of your demolition in the off season to give you a jumpstart on the major work that needs to be done. But, um, it's hard to predict at this point when your start time of construction is because you really gotta hone in on the final design first.
Okay. And just also to add to that, um, I've been in contact with the Cheshire Parks and Rec Director to kind of arrange some sort of, uh, palatable fee pass structure so that our residents can go there as we did for their pool three years ago. Oh, that would be great. Yeah.
If we did lose a pool season.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Morgenstein?
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Um, just a huge amount of work that I've seen since I was attending your meetings in March when I was between jobs. Um, I'm excited not only by the presentation and what you've come up with, but by the excitement here to my left. Um, this is, as we're saying, a community wide, bring people in, um, you know, we want people to move to Wallingford. We want, you know, Wallingford to be supporting a really vibrant community. Um, the fact that you're having, you know, fit young people on exercise equipment next to, you know, older people swimming, younger kids. This is a complete, you know, 360 from what we have right now, which is a pool that, you know, serves a, a small amount of the population and you've really put a vision into this. Um, yeah, I, I'm with Craig. Let's, you know, see where we can move along here to make this happen. And I was having exactly the thought that John already, um, put forward is can we give pool access to the people that in all likelihood are gonna be missing it um, a season while we get this work done? So you guys have really thought of everything and we're behind you here. Thank you for all you've done.
Counselor Shortell?
How much would it cost to connect the pool to Yalesville? The, the section near the airport, like to do some kind of road, right, Route 68, there's so much traffic. Uh, I know, it's a state road. Um, just two points. I wanted to echo, uh, something Vice Chair Laffin talked about with feedback. I mean, I was never a huge fan of the survey. No offense, the, the survey wasn't gonna change my mind. I, I said this last time you guys were here. The survey, my mind is made up. We don't survey on other things. We don't survey on hundred million dollar border bed budgets. We don't survey on other, you know, we're here to lead. And, and, you know, so I'm, I'm really was never a huge fan of the survey. And I do think people, like Vice Chair Laffin said, people have ample opportunity to give feedback, to attend your meetings, to, you know, call you, write you. So I think, I think that's, you know, people can still do that. I just, the only other thing I wanted to, I guess, clarify, I mean, the existing pool is on its last legs. And I'm not on, I don't know what's on Facebook. I'm not on Facebook, but I don't know what rumors are out there. I just know what I see when I'm there. And I know that, that the process is every year when that pool closes, there is a walkthrough at the end of the year in November. And then there's a second walkthrough at, in the spring to see what damage the winter did. And at either of those decision points, you, there's, you know, you see other pipes cracked. I mean, there, so that puts every year when that pool closes, there is a very, very, very real chance that pool's gone. I mean, that's where we are. Am I, am I wrong about that or am I, is that, that's not rumor mongering?
No, it's accurate.
Okay. So I just think that needs to be out there, that, that whatever we do with, with this, um, the pool as it stands now is, is not long for this world. Um, maybe it's this year, maybe it's next year. I mean, maybe we squeeze a few more years out of it, but I just think it's important to, to note that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, comments or questions from the public? Mr. Morgenstein?
Good evening, Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Alita Cella from Save Our Pool. She apologizes, but she had to leave, go home. So she had a few inputs. Uh, first of all, she wants to congratulate and say a big thank you to the pool committee for their openness and including people from Save Our Pool and listening to the community. It's been essential and it's been welcome and it's appreciated. So that was the first thing that she wanted to express to you tonight. Uh, her other comments and thoughts were, and it's been echoed by other people up on the council, is that while the survey may not be needed at this point, there needs to be ample room for comments from the public to maybe, uh, do some tweaking, some other ideas that maybe aren't included. Uh, there are certain things that Alita was wondering about was in the picnic area where, where there might be included some, uh, grills. If people wanted to grill at the pool, uh, there's certain parks that have had things that would accommodate that. She was wondering about lights within the pool structure. I'm not sure what the, the plan is right now for lighting around the pool or in the pool itself that would allow for lights at night and things like that. So those are just some of the things that, uh, she had in mind. A comment that I had or a question that I had was if we were to build this sort of concept, what would be the sort of life expectancy that we'd be getting for our four to six million projected cost? What would be the lifespan?
I'll try to answer that question. Lifes, lifespan on construction is a staggered piece. It's not uniform. You may hear some people say you're gonna get 20, 30 years out of something. We all know that equipment has staggered, staggered lifespans and so forth. Um, it's a brand new structure. Your current structure has lasted many years. Uh, the anticipation is that would last the same amount of years in terms of the structure. We're building a brand new underdrain system that will last as long as this one has currently lasted. Uh, the interior of the building clearly is over 20 years, 30 years worth of 40. Uh, it, there's many years worth of life when you are starting over. And although we're not demolishing the existing building, we are fully renovating it to an as new type of condition. So, uh, I, I think your investment is well beyond any type of construction um, that you're planning to do.
And I think that's an important point to point out to people if people are saying in terms of overall cost. When you look at four to six million, it's a considerable cost to the community. But when you look at over time, what that brings to the community and the future generations of kids and adults and seniors here and what that does for community. We're talking about a value that goes way beyond the immediate. So I just think in selling this to people, if there's people that are in doubt about what the costs are, I think the values of it over time far outweigh it. So, thank you. And thanks for all your work.
Mayor?
Yes, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, uh, what's seriously being considered is a salt, a salt water pool. Um, so that, you know, that isn't a surprise. I know it was mentioned earlier, but it's easy not to hear it. So I'm just trying to identify that as a single. I, I think that's a nice addition personally, but people have to be aware of that. Uh, the other thing is, uh, there is some idea about what the, the pool tags will cost or that's still working on or what?
So the committee's still working on that, but, um, we didn't want to commit to what a pool tag would cost. But the committee does feel that the pool tag, um, should at least cover the operational costs. So at the appropriate time, we'll come out with that.
Counselor Morgenstein?
Yeah, we talked, um, at a prior meeting about tag costs and I think it's important, um, to realize that there should be, whether it's a private endeavor, whether it's the town itself, some endeavor made to perhaps consider, um, sponsorship, scholarship, whatever. It, it would be very nice to kind of work into that program, the ability to give some lower income people the ability, even if it were just a specific time or a, you know, here's, you know, X number of passes that could be. Um, I, I, I would see a real value to that. Um, I'd actually heard something, um, a few weeks ago, a study about how many lower income children do not know how to swim and that they drown at a much higher rate than others. And so it's not health, fitness, life overall, you know, really a nice community idea as well, just to think about. Kind of an aside. Thank you.
Certainly. Gentlemen in the purple shirt. You could come up and let us know who you are.
Kevin McNamara. Question for Mr. Stein. Uh, I know this is still in the conceptual stage. What would the, uh, pool be, uh, made of? You know, what kind of a surface are we talking about here?
Yeah, that's a good question. There are many options out there. Um, the design team's gonna need to bring in a pool expert that will be able to present to the committee the various options. Obviously, cost is, is a big part of it. Um, most of these structures, I mean, the, the substrate is a concrete. The surface would, uh, would also be a spray-on, uh, cementitious type of product, uh, is typically what's, wha- what you do on, on pools of this scale. It's not like a residential pool where you put a vinyl-type liner or so forth. You probably hear the term gunite, but it's essentially a cementitious product that's there. There's different components that go along with it in terms of its surface. And since we have a zero-entry pool, there needs to be some type of grit that's introduced into that that reduces slip. There's slip resistance that's there. So those are, those are many of the choices. That's probably one of the large ones that will easel, need to be discussed at this point. We didn't get into that finite selection at this point.
Okay, so, so if, whatever we come up with, we won't be faced with having to scrape and paint the pool every year?
Yeah, the intent is not a concrete structure that has an epoxy coating.
So that would, that would be one cost we can just do away with.
Well, there's always maintenance. And that's the one thing that I think everyone needs to be aware of when you build any structure, that there is maintenance that's gonna need to be built into your operating piece. But the intent is, yes, date, year two, you are not repainting the pool every off-season.
Right, I know.
Okay, in the future, there will be the, there'll be coatings that's required when you get past a certain useful portion of that coating life.
Right.
But the intent is not that every year you are now going in, scraping it, repainting, and so forth.
Okay. And one of, I don't, um, since you guys started to talk about pool tags, I really wasn't thinking about that. But, um, I've heard, I've heard many people say that this pool needs to be self-supporting. And I really don't get the, the angle on that. Uh, we have numerous other athletic facilities and park facilities throughout Wallingford that are completely free. Uh, the soccer fields have the, these lights that they use. Who pays for all that? I mean, I mean, it'd be nice if the pool could pay for itself, but even if it doesn't, don't we owe it to the citizens of the town to have something that they can use, something for their tax dollars?
Mike, do you wanna take a crack at that?
That's just a statement, not a question.
Sure.
Thank you.
But just to respond to that, uh, one of the things we feel that we had the, um, duty to do is to come up with a way that the pool would be self-sustaining and, uh, not be a burden to the taxpayers in any way so that pool tags would pay. When you think about the number of people who are using the pool currently, um, twenty-nine-hundred people or whatever the number is, and we have a population of forty-five, forty-six thousand, to ask all the taxpayers to take that bite would be, I think, a little unfair. So that's how we're looking at it, a little differently from, I think, the way the school systems and the fields are working. Just a comment.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
Well, um, I, I am gonna say that I too am impressed by the amount of work that's been done, the design development that you've come up with. I, I, while I do think that there's a public benefit to having, uh, a community pool that's improved and more useful, generally speaking, I'm a little worried about the money. But if there's, if I certainly gain the perception that there's strong public support for it, my perception is that the council will figure out how to pay for it.
Mayor?
Yeah, obviously, the general cost, principal interest will be borne through taxes. So that's, that's spread across everyone. They're talking about the operational cost, not the cost of the pool, uh, operating and construction.
Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know it's problematic not to go after the chairman, but another topic got raised. I just wanted to ask a few questions about that. What's the sta, I know years ago, we approved, I think it was through ordinance, uh, the advertising on fields. I, I mean, is that something that's open, you know, along with what Counselor Morgenstein had to say about, you know, sponsors and that kinda stuff? Is, is it possible to put signs up on the fence? Is that something that would be able to happen?
That's really a law department issue. I think it was approved as a school, a public education project where students would be in charge of it, uh, as, as part of their, the public education effort. However, putting signs on public areas in general, uh, brings the free speech issues with it. And, uh, then it becomes very difficult to, uh, tell, uh, someone they can't have a sign versus someone who wants a sign. I, I don't, Jerry, are you up on that at this point?
No, Janice has done a lot of research.
But, uh, Janice Small, Corporation Council, had done a lot of research on it. I think the only thing that was approved was a, was a mechanism for advertising on public school grounds.
Which are essentially owned by the town. Just trying to find the distinction.
It's structured under an education program. So you don't, apparently that's an, an exception or an exemption or whatever from the free speech issue. But once you deal with anything outside of education, it becomes a question of free speech. And at, at what point can you shut off the ability to put up a sign?
Why?
One advertiser you might like, another advertiser, what their message is or what they're selling you don't really like. You're, you're, you're gonna have a difficult time saying yes to one and no to another. That's my understanding of it.
And I share that concern, but I'll just, when we had the ordinance committee meeting, which was many, many years ago, it might have been two thousand and ten. You know, I went to whoever the athletic director was at that time. And I said, because we talked about businesses actually buying the ads. And I gave them my business card. And I said, I, I wanna be your first advertiser. And I never heard anything. So I know we did contemplate as part of that process, um, you know, businesses advertising, which, which begs the, the other question. What about perhaps naming rights for a facility like this? You know, a lot of times, there's a five-year contract, you know, a million dollars, you get the naming rights of, I mean, is that something that we would be able to do?
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's people paying money and it, for, for some kind of, uh, a name, a plaque, uh, parts of it, I mean, that could be looked at. Whether, whether you really wanna go that direction for a public, uh, facility of this kind is, is another question. But, uh, there are all kinds of ways of raising money and that really wouldn't be viewed as advertising. That would just be a plaque that would indicate that a person had supported the program to the extent of X amount of money and, uh, their name would appear at the appropriate place there. I, I don't see that as advertising, but it...
Well, I'm saying something like, you know, the-
One example is the dog park.
Allstate Insurance Pool Facility located in Wallingford. I mean, that's naming rights. I, I don't know. Is that something that we could do?
One example is a dog park. Mr. Sibkowski had donated seventeen or eighteen thousand for all the fencing. And basically, that was really the, the only major expense. And it's called the Burt and-
Harry, Harry Sibkowski.
Correct.
Yes.
Dog park.
Well, a good, good point. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, thank you.
If we move on to the next, I think we are going to call an executive session.
I move we go into executive session pursuant to Section one dash two-hundred-six D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, I declare the council back in public session. There being no further business on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare the meeting adjourned. Everybody navigate the waters home.